And call the meeting to order. So please go ahead and join me to say the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'd like to welcome Chris Getz with First Christian Church to say the invocation, please.
My pleasure. Will you bow with me? Heavenly Father, we come before you and thank you for the privilege and the blessing that it is that we've got a city that cares and a team of people that also care. And so we just ask, Lord, your wisdom and your guidance as they continue on to deal with the affairs of our town, we're grateful for them. And I just pray, Lord, your hand of blessing as they make decisions for us. It's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, approval of the minutes for November 24th City Commission meeting. Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I do not have any questions.
Commissioner Gwynn?
Yeah, under regular business, they got two in the second paragraph under that, they got two of them morphed together. So the supplement agreement number three from PEC, I think, so I think I think Bridget made the motion, Jody seconded.
Need to clean up the verbiage.
And it approved two to one. And then on the on the motion on the annual Christmas bonus, the way I remember it, it don't really matter, but I think I motion, I think Bridget seconded it. I think it was a three to oh, three to zero vote.
Yep, yep, I'll fix it.
Correct.
Okay, and that's, that's all that I saw.
Okay, then I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the November 24th, 2020 minutes after amended. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Recognition of Employee of the Month for November was Desiree Donovan. Thank you so much, Desiree, for all the work that you have done. I know that, at least I'm pretty sure you've been handling, coordinating the Zoom meetings for us and giving us all of our meeting materials. Always appreciated. I always have enjoyed talking to you. Very pleasant and upbeat and positive. And you even gave up your office space, which was very considerate to help with the, when the city was reorganizing. So we just thank you so much for always being a team player and being there for the city.
Yes.
Citizens to be heard. I don't know if there's anyone on the call. I don't see anyone, so we'll go ahead and move on to governing body comments. Student rep Nathan Gwynn, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Commissioner Gwynn?
Just first off, I'd just like to thank Mike Burns of the Auburn Pharmacy for the donating courtesy car to the airport and out there this evening. And a very nice car, huge upgrade for them. And Airport Project looks like it is proceeding. They run into a hitch. One crew, a couple of the crew members got COVID, so they had to send them home and brought in another crew. So they're hoping to, they're hoping to finish everything up Thursday. So it's kind of progressing, but they ran into a hitch today on that. And that's, that's all that I got.
Okay, Commissioner Cole?
Yes, I would like to thank the chamber for organizing the Santa Cruz. I'm really excited for that to take place on December 19th, six to eight o'clock, right? I think that's right. And I also want to thank the Friends of the Prairie Spirit Trail for decorating the Harris Park. They always do such a nice job and it just, we appreciate them. So that's all I have.
Um, Chris, the only thing I was kind of curious about was the Southern Star comments. I know that that period was really limited and I was kind of wondering if the city knew if anyone had submitted anything to that.
As far as I'm aware, nobody submitted any comments or had any concerns regarding the, regarding the proposed leave-in-place project.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I just wanted to thank Auburn Pharmacy too for the donation of that car. I noticed that this past weekend, I believe there are people here who were able to utilize it. So that was really exciting and so wonderful to see that we have a little bit of an updated model there. All right, moving on to regular business. Item A, consideration of appointment of Bob Mills and reappointment of Beth Mersman to the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. All right, Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'm excited to see all the people that are interested in all the openings that we have on this committee. So no questions.
Commissioner Gwynn?
I didn't have any questions either.
Okay, I did not either. So I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the appointment of Bob Mills and Beth Mersman to the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Consideration of appointment of Helen Norman and reappointment of Susan Karen to the Tourism Advisory Board. Commissioner Cole?
I don't have any questions. I would move to approve the appointment of Helen Norman and the reappointment of Susan Karen to the Tourism Advisory Board.
Okay, I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Consideration of reappointment of Janon Gordon and Roy Salazar to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. All right, Commissioner Cole?
No, I would move to approve the reappointment of Janon Gordon and Roy Salazar to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
I have second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye? All right, um, consideration of reappoint, oh, sorry, motion passes. All right, consideration of reappointment of Linda Hutton Mueller and Sandra Moffett to the Library Board. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the reappointment of both Ms. Hudson Mueller and Sandra Moffett to the Library Board. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And then consideration of reappointment of Elizabeth Abraham to the Housing Authority Board. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the appointment of Elizabeth Abraham to the Housing Authority Board. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Approval of CBDG CB funds and the amount of $341.63 for CD Schulte Agency. This is probably pretty standard than Chris to go along with all the other CDBG dollars, correct? Okay, are there any questions that the other commissioners have?
I didn't have any.
I don't have any questions.
All right, then we'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the CBDG CB funds in the amount of $12,341.63 for CD Schulte Agency. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item G, consideration of Police Department remodel. I think there might be questions here, so we'll slow down. Okay, Chris, Chief King is on the call, isn't he?
Yeah, I know he was getting on. I don't know if he's here quite yet or not, unless he's mom's computer. I'm not seeing him, so.
Now, I noticed, I noticed that he had sent a video kind of explaining everything that he was looking at having remodeled. And that has not changed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless something's changed in the last hour and a half, so, and I don't believe so.
Right, yeah, okay.
That's what I was going to ask. When did he send the video?
I didn't see it.
I haven't seen it, but I've been driving home as, so.
So, um, if you hold on a second, I can tell you, I'm not exactly sure what this will do to my video, but I re, I received the video from a link called evidence.com on December 4th. So there was an email first from Kurt King. And it, it went to all of our Garnet Kansas City email addresses. So if you haven't checked that one, then that would be where you would have received it. And right after that was the one who.
I received an email from him that said he was going to send one. But I, I mean, I checked earlier today and I still hadn't received it. So I don't know if there's something wrong with that email address or maybe it just didn't come through.
Right.
But if he sent it on the 4th, today's the 8th, it should, you know, it's had plenty of time to get there. So, okay. But there isn't, there aren't any changes compared to the written information that he gave us at the previous.
I, I don't believe so. And Kurt has joined the conversation now, so I can let him address some of this. But with regard to the email issues, I can, if you would like, I can access, I'd have to change your passwords, but I can try to get into it and see if there's any issues and make sure that it's functioning properly. But if you would like to try to do that, I can try to see if there's any issues there that may be preventing you from receiving those. And then I could reset the password and resend you, resend it to you so you can update your password after, after we get it, whatever issues there may be addressed.
Okay, yeah, I wouldn't mind finding out maybe why it didn't come through. But I did have an opportunity to read through the material he gave us at the last meeting, so, yeah.
So, Chief King, there was a question about the video. Only Mayor Breckhaisen-Huss has had a chance to review the video, I believe. Commissioner Gwynn, you didn't get a chance to either?
I don't, I don't use my city email, so I didn't, I didn't see it.
Okay. So I know that Commissioner Cole indicated, Chief, you came in just a little bit late. Commissioner Cole indicated she, for some reason, hasn't received it either on, on her city email address. So we'll have to look into, to why that occurred. And try to make sure we can get that out to you, but.
You might check to see if it wasn't maybe went into spam, because it's, it would have been a link from evidence.com. Like, so once it got uploaded from our body cams, it shares, it's a secure portal, so it sends a link. And it'll self, I said it, I think, for 10 days and then it self deletes after that. But they should have got a link to download from evidence.com. And there's times that that will go to spam.
So I did receive it in the main inbox there shortly after you sent the first email. So it at least didn't go to, to my spam email folder, I guess.
Did that, and I guess the commissioners, I mean, haven't seen it. I, I mean, I just guessed something up. I didn't know the dimensions. I just took some, some guesses, but I sketched up some sort of blueprint. Have there, is there, has there been a plan made or are we still where we was at last time? We just want to build something and then tear it down and redo it later?
Well, I guess my question to the commission is, is what is considered later?
Well, it would be my hopes that we can proceed. If we, I don't have trouble expending this amount of money on the project if it's a section of the building and that part's done and then, and then we carry the project on as we get monies. But to, to do it and then just turn around and tear it out seems like a waste of money.
And I guess the only thing that I was thinking, if we continue to put 12.5 into the capital improvement line item each year, based on what the architects gave us on that previous one at a half a million, it's going to be like 38 years before we get to the half a million mark to remodel it completely.
I'm thinking a half a million is going to be kind of a Taj Mahal. It might even make the county, county barn look like a coat closet. I, I don't know how you could hardly spend a half million dollars in that space.
I, I'm just going off what the architects told me. I, I thought that was a, I, I figured it'd be closer to a quarter of a million personally, but the problem is, is that it has steps and to even get it in ADA compliant, just like the side entrance is going to take, the, the grade would take you almost halfway across the building.
Coming in from the parking lot?
Yes.
Is there, is there one step or maybe two?
There's two. And then the same thing for the step down to get over to the city hall side.
The ADA issues are significant that Chief King is referencing. And if we were to make any kind of full-scale remodel, we would be required to make it ADA compliant, to my understanding.
So this, tonight's proposal is exactly the same as last time, right?
I believe that is the case, yes. Chief King was hoping that with an additional couple of weeks to review, that the commission might be, might have enough time to review and consider the information. And then I think that the issue at the last time was that you only had a couple hours to, to review that information. So that was obviously challenging to do.
Now, Chris, just, no, go ahead.
Information that he, okay, on the remodel information that he gave us at the previous meeting that I read through, that's not going to be enough that it would lock us into any ADA compliance, right?
I, I don't believe so. City Attorney Solander, would you have any concerns with regard to more amount to a minor? Mr. Solander, you're muted.
Okay, how about that?
There you go.
There we go.
Okay. Yeah, I got it. I'm muted. I don't have any drawings or anything, but based on my conversations with Chief King, I think the remodeling that's proposed for right now is slight enough that it probably would not trigger ADA. Doesn't, doesn't to address the entry and so forth. And areas that are obviously non-compliant won't be affected by it. So it's always been my understanding that unless pretty much started from scratch, if you left areas that weren't, as long as what you put back is ADA compliant, you should be all right.
Okay, thank you.
So Chris, this would come out of already budgeted capital improvement funds, right?
Yes, ma'am.
What was that dollar amount again? I know it was on the previous, but I didn't see it on the front here. It might be.
All the bits total up to $17,673.96.
Okay.
And if the commission would feel better, I guess some things, if you, we could scale back on some things. The biggest thing is, is I have a an interview room upgrade coming. The software is going to get purchased here in the next week or so. And so we have to insulate one room to, so that we can adequately use our interview room. And then that south room, I still would request, even if we don't do some of the others, I would still request like the flooring and things would help improve it, just the looks dramatically. And that, the one wall in the south room, I would assume, even if we do a remodel, will stay there. And a complete remodel, I'd assume that would remain probably the same. And then the flooring, i- if, if a, somehow we come up with money to do a more extensive remodel, then we could reuse the flooring. It's, it's going to be a vinyl plank flooring, which will come up easily. And it can just lay over the existing flooring that we have.
Mayor Breckhaisen-Huss, I don't have any other questions. And I would be fine if you would want to make a motion.
Okay, I, yeah, I just, I was just going to make mention of the fact that it's coming from the Police Department's Capital Improvement Fund. I, I am okay with the idea of using it at the discretion and approval of the of the city manager as well with the police department, you know, and identifying that need. And I mean, Chief King, you know the needs of the department. And if that is where you find that, you know, capital improvements are best made, then I trust that. And I did appreciate being able to watch the video to see that as well. So I am, I'm fine with that expenditure if that is how you want to proceed, especially in light of the odds of there being a significant remodel in the near future is unlikely. And it does need a lot of work done to that area. So I am, I'm okay with that as well. Now, Commissioner Gwynn, were there any other questions you had before any motion is made?
No, I, like I say, I don't have, I don't have a problem with expenditure and they definitely need some upgrades to that area. But I, well, I just for the lack of planning, to be able to use this remodeled area into the future, I just can't vote for it with as it stands.
Okay. We'll go ahead and make a motion then to approve the Police Department remodel in the amount of, and correct me if I'm wrong, $17,673.96. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye? All again, or all opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes two to one. All right, consideration of claim for damages from Commissioner Gwynn.
I've spent, well, I really don't know how much time I've spent on it. I've spent more on it than what I anticipated I would have to. I'd say I'm probably 75 to 80% through, but I'd like the opportunity to complete it. I should be able to give you a report in advance of the next meeting so that you would have it prior to that time.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Fair enough.
Okay, then we will go ahead and table that for the next meeting and move on to discussion regarding an ordinance regulating dirt bike tracks or noise levels. Chris, do you mind going and explaining this a little bit? I mean, do you even have a, I didn't see that there was an example ordinance in here? Or if anything in our noise ordinances would pertain to addressing any of this, if you don't mind kind of elaborating on the issue?
Absolutely. So the, currently the city does not have really a formal noise ordinance, like a lot of communities do. We basically have disturbing the peace. But there's not like, you know, decibel level type ordinance that a lot of communities have. The challenge has been that we had a resident who has requested that an ordinance be considered regarding dirt bike tracks in the city limits, because right across from his house is, one of his neighbors has basically started to use their front yard as a, as a dirt bike track. And I believe I provided a link to a, to a video. Hopefully you were able to review that. And basically, the the situation was that the, the individual is having an excessive amount of noise that is disturbing the, the individual. And he has, I believe I provided in your, in a packet this evening, a list of community members, neighbors to that property who have basically signed a petition that they would be in favor of consideration of such an ordinance. We discussed a couple of different options with this, with this resident, whether it be, you know, a noise ordinance, whether it be regulating dirt tracks, et cetera. I told him I wasn't sure what direction the commission might like to proceed. And that's why I don't have a sample ordinance in front of you. Really was hoping to get some guidance from you this evening on if you would like to consider such an ordinance. And then City Attorney Solander and I can try to come up with something for your consideration. But, you know, whether it would be something that you would want to, to view a dirt bike track prohibition, whether it be in city limits, whether it be in a residential area, or whether it be something more along the lines of a, of a traditional noise ordinance, regulating certain decibel levels, et cetera. So was, wasn't exactly sure what direction you might like to go, but thought I'd hear what your thoughts were on that.
Could I make a comment if you guys don't mind?
Sure.
Um, I don't know, Mr. Solander and Greg, you guys might remember when there was an issue with someone having a gun range out off of Katalpa. I don't know what the precedence was. I mean, I think that set the precedence for this. I don't know what the final decision was on that, but this was probably six or seven years ago. Do you remember how that, what we did there with, with that noise complaint?
I think it just pretty much took care of itself. I'm not recalling that we did anything particular on that.
I don't remember anything being done either.
Yeah, that's my recollection is that we, we talked about it and the complaints went away or subsided or something, because I sure don't recall that we enacted anything to address the issue.
And I, wasn't that property in the county and not in the city also?
It was county.
Yes, that's what I was thinking. And the, if, if I, I haven't done any research in the Registered Deeds Office with this particular situation and the person who has the dirt, dirt bike track. But I believe some part, if not a significant part of their ground is outside the city. And if it's prohibited, just, you know, from a dirt bike standpoint, you're going to have a problem if they're doing it outside the city. The noise ordinance looks to me like it might be the most profitable avenue to explore. And the only cautionary that I would say at this point is 10 or 15 years ago, when these noise ordinances became fairly popular, it coincided with the availability of relatively inexpensive decibel meters. And there was some concern in some cities that without proper training, city officials would probably get challenged in court when the prosecution of citations was necessary. I don't, I've seen a number of ordinances that now prohibit noise. And again, it's not an exhaustive search by any means, but after the notes appeared last meeting in the city manager's report, I, I did a very minimal amount of checking. There are enough of them out there that I suspect maybe some of the early concerns have been addressed or proved to be not the problem that they were expected to be. So I think a noise ordinance might be more effective if somebody was trying to move it outside the, the city limits. Noise has a way of moving and I, I'm not so sure that you couldn't make an argument that the city would have jurisdiction if somebody was so close to the boundary as to be able to, you know, create virtually an indistinguishable problem for city residents, even though that was being generated outside the city. Those are just pretty much random thoughts right now, but unless there's a real appetite just to address dirt bikes, I think my inclination would be to study it from that perspective, at least initially.
Have they, I assume this property is in the city limits and, and have, has anybody reached out to that property owner and, and talked to them? I mean, we're talking about passing rules for everybody over this one situation. and talked to them? I mean, we're talking about passing rules for everybody over this one situation.
I haven't talked to anybody about it.
So I have not spoken with the, the individual in question. I can certainly reach out to, to, to that person. I do, my understanding is that there have been conversations regarding this situation with the neighbor and the individual, but I have not, but I can certainly do that if, if you would like to have me explore that route prior to moving forward with an ordinance.
Yeah, I think that I would appreciate hearing what would come of a conversation with the person. I mean, is it during the day typically that this is happening or is it a nighttime event?
So to my, at least the, the video that was provided, it was certainly daylight and it seems to me through the conversation I had with the, with the resident that it wasn't necessarily limited to certain timeframes, that it was probably a fairly consistent issue in evenings and during the daytime. But I can, I can certainly visit with the, with the individual who the complaint is, is regarding.
Yeah, that would be great, please. Commissioner Cole, did you have any other questions and the interim before he speaks?
No, but I do think it's a good idea to reach out to the person who has the complaint to try to gather all the information. So we'll have that as we move forward.
Yeah. Good. And if nothing else too, the person then has the opportunity to become aware that it's coming before the commission. So they could always speak on the matter as well. Okay, approval of semi-monthly bills and payroll in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, ninety-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I do not.
Commissioner Gwynn?
I got my questions answered. Only notes on that three hundred and eight thousand of it is for fueling apron and taxiway at the airport. And four hundred and thirty-seven thousand of it is for debt payoff on our waterline project. So that's some, some big numbers that on this thing up. Just for a little explanation of some of it.
Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this semi-monthly bills and payroll in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, ninety-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Do you hear a second?
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. We'll go ahead and move on to informational items, departmental reports. Commissioner Cole, did you have any comments or questions on these?
I do have a few on Julie, and I know she's on here. It said that the, the harvesters, the next distribution may be on Monday, December twenty-first. If someone wants to help with that, who would they, do they contact you?
Susan? Was that who you were referencing, Mrs. Cole?
It is.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, you could certainly reach out to Susan or Mr. Dan Coltrane is actually who puts that together. And I don't know if you know Mr. Coltrane's contact information, but.
I don't have his contact information, but I do know who it is.
Okay. Certainly, we can help coordinate that if you would have any interest in assisting. I do know it's always, the more hands that are available certainly makes it a lot easier. It's been growing certainly, especially around the holiday season in terms of the number of people who are who are in need and the, the amount of food and resources that are provided, it's, it's just absolutely tremendous that our community can do that for our people.
Yeah, I have that day off, so I would, I would like to, to help with that. The other question I have in Susan's report, it talks about meals on wheels. Is there, is there an age limit to the kids that could help with that? Do you know, like, let's say KAY organization or the FBLA out of the high school are, if that would even work for them? Do they have to be a certain age to help with that? That's what I was.
To, to be honest, I am not sure on, on that.
Could I just email Susan? Would she probably?
She might know. Mr. Solander, do you happen to know if there's any age restrictions?
I'm not aware of any age restrictions on it, but I haven't had any reason to check into it, so I really don't know.
My, my first thought would be that it'd probably be possible. Essentially, you're just picking up meals, previously prepared meals from the senior center and then delivering them to, to wherever their destination is, but as long as you have a driver's license, my assumption would be that that would be possible.
I think where there's no compensation involved in doing it, it's a regular Class C license, which seventeen or eighteen year old would be able to possess, so that ought to be adequate.
Okay, I will pass that information on. I wanted to ask on the fire department, add a question. He just said that there's some additional emergency equipment that's going to be needed and he's going to put that in his December report. Do you know, do you have any idea what equipment he's talking about? Is it going to be like big dollar amounts or something that we might be able to get for them?
So it was all purchases that I think were, you know, going in total to less than five thousand, if I remember correctly. Chief Skilman and I had a conversation about what they needed to try to do here at the end of the year, if there were any, any expenses, any needs that they had. And, you know, one thing was getting the garage doors repaired. They weren't closing all the way and the, the motor itself and the chain, it was constantly running and didn't get it fixed. Eventually that door was going to malfunction to where it's going to open. And then when we have a fire, we need to get a truck out. We can't get the truck out because the door won't open. Or, you know, we, we end up having to replace the whole door and gear and chain and everything. So I believe that's going to be around a thousand dollar fix and he's looking for, hopefully get a grant for that as well. He went ahead and purchased, I believe it was another weed eater, a chainsaw, some equipment to help outfit the trucks. So that way, no matter which truck they take, they'll, they'll have the equipment that they need. Currently, we have, or at least historically, we have had to at times switch equipment from one truck to another to try and make sure that the right equipment was on the truck that they were going to respond with. And by outfitting the trucks with all the same equipment, they're not going to have to, to spend valuable time trying to make sure that the, the truck has the tools that they need before they can actually respond. So this way they can have a quicker response time as well as, I believe, a fairly significant purchase was a fan. You know, just trying to make sure that they're, they're properly outfitted for the, the job itself. And so most everything was tool oriented. Or like in the case of the garage door, some repairs there. I believe they're also looking at replacing the bay lighting from traditional lighting to LED lights, which will be some capital expense, but long-term should save us some money on, on electric, on electricity costs. Same, same deal with the garage door and that it wasn't closing properly. And so we were leaking air conditioning, we were leaking hot, hot air all the time. And so by fixing that, we, it should reduce our utility costs as well, given that we'll be able to actually close that door. So overall, I, I do think that it's going to be less than, you know, five thousand dollars, to my understanding.
Okay, I just, when the fire department needs things for their trucks, I just wanted to make sure that we, I didn't want to slow up that process. So if there are things that they need, I just want to make sure that they get those. I just have a couple more things on the parks and recreation. And this is just a question. I know that high school activities are not allowing anybody in, any spectators. And so when I read that we are doing that, I just, I didn't know if there was, I mean, maybe what we, what reasoning we use to, to do that to spectators.
So Phil and I had a, had a conversation about this yesterday morning and I didn't have a chance to, to visit with him at length to try and really see, I guess, what modifications they're looking at. But I know that there are restrictions on the, on the amount of spectators that are going to be allowed. Know that in our league, there are a number of schools that were, it was pivotal to get on board with being able to really play ball at all, because if they were going to, in a lot of cases, it was, you know, a consideration of they may not allow us to, to be in there at all and, and use their gymnasiums. And that was something that thankfully we were able to, our league was able to partner with those schools and make that happen. There was, I believe, one school or one community that dropped out of our recreational league because they did not want to abide by the restrictions on attendance for spectators. So rather than play with limited spectators, they decided they opted out of playing at all. But we are grateful to be able to offer the the programming at all. So I know that that's something right now that's challenging. Kaysha did meet today to review the appeals board's recommendation to, rather than completely remove spectators to allow, I believe it was somewhere between one or two parents or spectators per child. I'm not sure. You, you're probably more aware of what that result was than, than I am, but I, I know that in general, the, the leagues, our league was able to get schools and gymnasiums available that we were going to be able to have limited spectators. And so it is something that, you know, maybe a little bit more than what Kaysha allows, but it is limited at least.
Okay.
If you don't mind, real, real quick, I just, we also purchased two iPads with Spark funding so they can actually stream those youth sport games to still limit the attendance. So we were going to not, we weren't going to be able to spend everything that we were allotted. And so we were thinking outside the box and Phil suggested doing that. I reached out to the county clerk and she said, yeah, that's a viable Spark expense. So we actually did and purchased two iPads so they can live stream those games as well.
Yeah, I was excited to see that when I read that. I did want to compliment Karen, who is doing some online classes, exercise classes. So good for her. The last thing I had, I happen to think the fire department, they always make money through their chili soup supper. And I know we have that Santa Cruzan coming up and I didn't know it might be too late, but I wondered if they could do something where people could order it and, you know, get, get those items, get soup to go maybe during that time and maybe that would help them bring a little bit of money for some of the things that they're needing. But just an idea. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Gwynn?
Well, on the, the West Report Fire Chief, I see they got two new firefighters on board, Zachary Wilper and Justin Thompson. So that's good that they, they're getting some, some young people on there and got some interest in that. It's a vital service that they provide. One, on one of the reports, I see a wastewater truck is needing replaced. Is that a, is that like a pickup stop truck or a, or a bigger truck?
Commissioner Gwynn, can you hear me? Commissioner Gwynn, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, it is a Ford F-250 and it's not necessarily meaning replaced. It would serve as a backup truck, but it's getting pretty thin. Pretty thin. And my hope is that next year we can get them a new truck or a good used truck and then have that as a backup truck. Mechanically, we're putting a lot of money into parts and labor because that is their daily driver. Twenty-five years old and I can see through the wheel well to the frame. It's getting pretty rough. I, I just wanted to bring that up because they're getting by very well with very little. And I don't want them to miss their turn and then they can't run a sewer because they don't have anything to pull the sewer runner with.
Chris, do we have, is there anything scheduled for twenty-one in regards to that? Do you know?
Commissioner Gwynn, sir? I've been taking care of or trying to take care of Public Works's Equipment Reserve and they are due for one next year.
It, was it budgeted?
Yes.
So we do have the, the budget set for the equipment reserve plan for next year for a wastewater truck, yes.
So it sounds like that issue is going to be resolved. Correct?
It should be, yes.
Okay. And then the looking for a replacement truck for the sanitation department. It sounds like that's probably the cheapest, best route than having these trucks that keep breaking down all the time. Realizing that that's, even with that said, it's still going to be an expensive venture, not only buying the truck, but then getting it outfitted with the, with the bed that's on our truck, I assume is what they're talking about doing, right?
We're hoping to move one of our beds over. We have a Ford that has a faulty brake system that we keep on getting repaired and then warranted on the second repair. And we have an International that has a faulty EGR valve due to engineering, very poor engineering. And my thought was to drive whichever one of the two into the ground. Get every last little bit of mileage out of it we can. And then replace that truck with a good used truck, sell the remnants on Purple Wave and move forward.
That, well, that, that sounds like a, a good plan to me. We, we need a reliable backup truck. I, I did something here lately and, and I was curious about the, we're hauling trash to Coffee County and I, so they're hauling trash over there in the trash truck to, to Coffee County, is that correct?
Yes.
When I looked into the pricing and Coffee County was one of them, it was really my intent is if we went with a transfer station and hauling bulk over there instead of a a pickup loader at a time, I, I don't see how that can be cost effective, even if you break.
Mr. Gwynn, we don't haul a pickup loader at a time, we haul a trash truck load. We're saving a little bit of money, not a lot. I'm working on a transfer station. It's going to be homemade, but we're going to save the engineering fee. And then I have another proposal that I think will actually move the trash service forward that should be discussed tonight. Furthermore, the guys are doing regular maintenance on the trucks now.
I read that, that's good. The, well, I, yeah, I'm interested in hearing about the transfer station. It was, yeah, really my intent to really see any cost savings is hauling more volume of trash, even though a trash truck still, as far as volume goes, isn't a terrible lot compared to what a semi-load would be to really see the savings. So it's whatever works. I was just surprised that that small volume was being hauled clear over there.
So so at the moment, we are currently paying forty dollars a ton at our local transfer station here. And at Coffee County, I believe we're paying twenty-four dollars a ton. So it's not half the cost. But at a, at a cost difference of sixteen, sixteen dollars a ton is how much we're hauling for trash load over there. I mean, that, that, we normally dispose of right around two thousand tons a year. That's thirty-two thousand dollars a year if we were to dump. And that's thirty-two thousand dollars a year. If we were to dump all of our trash at Coffee County, drive all that way back and forth. And our increased costs are, are labor as well as wear and tear on the trucks. The trucks truly are not meant for all the highway miles. So it is a little bit more wear and tear on them. Certainly, we're going to have increased costs associated with that. We're seeing some of that this year with regard to, because we had to go to Allen County last year. But, you know, in my mind, I don't think we're going to come close to an additional thirty-two thousand dollars. Even if we were to go there every day, that was our, that was our daily dump that we wouldn't spend an additional thirty-two grand a year in, in wear and tear vehicle maintenance and labor costs. You know, the, the trash utility is one that I think, you know, while all our costs are going to go up in terms of maintenance, they're not going to be, we're still going to save money on the sixteen dollar cost savings. Granted, that's still not ideal. I'd rather either a transfer station or have cost savings or a, a different structure as Mr. Burkhardt has, has proposed as what is in your packet. I, I think either one of those or them or both of them are more favorable options long-term. But for a short-term fix, I do believe that this is saving us money rather than being breakeven or even costing us extra.
And that forty dollars is going to forty-five, is that correct? Or that's what's planned?
And, and Mr. Glenn, I will say, I am trying everything that I have to make the trash service solvent. I'm looking into getting a recycling station because every pound we do not put on a truck, we don't pay for, moved down here, but I can't find anyone that's willing to do it for the recycling value that they get and moving it up here. I've considered hiring somebody three days a week on the trash service versus five. There's lots of things we're throwing out this to try.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to touch on a couple of those. But looking, to me anyway, looking for the replacement trucks is a, a good plan. The one thing I wanted to touch on and Susan had requested in her report that that we at least discuss something about the Garnet's hundred and sixtieth celebration. So I don't know if anybody have any thoughts on that. And that's all I had.
Commissioner Glenn, on that hundred and sixtieth anniversary, did she say she was going to reach out to the committee and kind of get some ideas first? I guess that, I guess that's how I read it. Then maybe she would check with them and then maybe get back with this.
What I read, it says here, I would appreciate the commission's thoughts on a celebration of the Garnet's one-sixtieth. Should we do another ball drop on twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one? Host a parade or a festival of sorts or in some other manner recognize the milestone. So I think what I read, she was putting it to us, what, if we had any thoughts of even doing anything or, or our blessing towards it.
Okay. It later, it says that she's going to be sharing that information. So, okay, I, I, I think we should do something. I, I don't know if I have any grand ideas right now, but I can think about it and shoot them to her. Shoot them as in an email. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I thought the hundred and fiftieth was a, was a neat deal. I can't remember the, the cost on that, the, the crisp cakes or whatever came down. And anyway, I thought it was kind of unique. Maybe we don't have to go that big this time, but it was a, just any kind of com- community involvement, I guess, with the COVID thing might, might change that outlook a little bit, but anything to get the community involved would be, would be a great thing.
Yeah, it's nice to have those opportunities to rally around, especially when it comes to a community event that is celebrating the existence of the city. So I think it'd be neat to see what ideas, you know, come forward from it. Is that all you, Commissioner Glenn?
That's all I had.
Okay. I think that we covered most of the comments. Let me see. Oh, Jody, I was just going to mention, I didn't get a chance to. I, I think part of the reason too, that they might, well, would be interested in allowing some spectators as opposed to zero is just the age group, like being, if it's K through second grade. I'm just thinking of my kids, I probably wouldn't want, I don't know, to just leave them there. And they probably wouldn't necessarily want me to leave, or there might be some children who wouldn't want their parents to leave them. So.
I, I did see that on the little ones and I, and that was my guess. I know we've got ones that come in that are probably two and three for SLP services and they have to leave them. The parents have to leave them at the door. So, yeah, I can, I'd be greater for everybody if, if they were there, but I I'm going to do, if we were allowing spectators.
Oh, yeah. Um, let me see. Oh, I was going to ask Chris, and I don't, I don't know if you'd be aware. It said that there was a greater influx of kids coming in from the high school whenever ritual learning is over for the day. I didn't know if there was, if everything at the rec center was still going well. I mean, I don't know if this is in off hours when there isn't office staff, if there's been any increase in not necessarily vandalism, but wear and tear or what we're seeing.
So we, I, and granted, I haven't had this exact discussion with Director Burris, but I know that when we have talked about the rec center, everything's going well, my understanding. We are planning on having the, the, the offices out there because as you are aware, Director Burris is moving his office down to the rec center. And so all that should be getting fixed up next week, I believe, with regard to the flooring and and so they, he should be down there here middle of the month, I believe, on a more permanent basis. The, with regard to current situation, I know our staffing isn't quite what it was. Given, you know, the COVID situation and whatnot, you know, we don't, we're not open as many hours as what we previously were with regard to just walk-ins. I think it's mainly two to seven at the moment. But we haven't seen, at least to my knowledge, any significant uptick with regard to vandalism or any significant negative factors, which is certainly a positive thing. And, you know, I think we've seen kind of the same thing with regard to, you know, the, the depot and some other areas where we have historically had some, some challenges. You know, this year has been somewhat unusual and that we haven't had those challenges is what we, as what we historically have had. So, so that's certainly been a positive. And I'm not sure, you know, exactly how everything fits into that, if it's the, you know, more isolation due to COVID or what it may be, but you know, as far as vandalism is concerned, at least that's been a positive for us. We haven't seen nearly as much of that that tiered to my, to my knowledge.
Thank you so much. That's really good to hear. I also noticed that they were working on a grant to possibly place an outdoor fitness park. Is this? I know this had kind of been talked about in the past. Would this be around the rec center where they're looking at?
Yes. So at the moment, the, the game plan would be to try to build it just in the tot lot south of the, of the rec center. And I know that this is a fairly significant exercise fitness area. It's to the tune of, I believe, around a hundred and sixty thousand dollar playground area. And they've applied for a grant to try to get some significant funding from that or for that, as well as looking for some, some area sponsors to help try to, to make that happen. They're going to choose, I believe, five sites in the state of Kansas to, to have this fitness area. And so we're in the running, at least to, to be selected for it. I know that I believe, talking to Phil, there is only one currently open in the state in Wichita and they're building one in Kansas City. And so it'd definitely be a, a positive and I think a significant draw to the community if we were able to, to, to bring such a fitness area to our community at a significantly reduced cost.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. Thank you for explaining that a little bit more. I appreciate that. Oh, I just wanted to point out too, I thought it was great. In the Public Works Department report, it said that they held a, an event like a barbecue morale event that didn't cost the city anything. And I just think that's wonderful that they were able to do that for their employees. I think that's all that I have marked. So we can go ahead and move on. Oh, unless, Chris, did you have anything?
On your last comment there, that was all Director Burkhardt. He, he decided to, to put that on for his staff and so certainly appreciate him, him doing that. I, I know, I think the guys certainly have appreciated it and are, I think it certainly is a good morale booster.
Yeah, I think wonderful. It sounds like there are a lot of good things and ideas coming out of the Public Works Department.
I would think, I did want to make one, one point on Commissioner Glenn's comment earlier about the almost four hundred thousand dollars in the airport expenses for the fueling apron. The vast majority of that will be reimbursed through an FAA grant. So that isn't necessarily the whole bunch of tax dollars being expended for an airport project. The extreme majority of that is going to be reimbursed, thankfully. So.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Oh, Chris, I did, I forgot. I had marked this as a question based on the trash hauling trash and whatnot. Have you heard anything from the county at all? And do we have a joint meeting before the end of the year?
We do not have a joint meeting as far as the, the county on this particular issue. They've essentially said, you guys want to research and look into your own transfers, transfer station, have at it. They don't think that that's an option that we are going to seriously consider. I think that it will be too expensive for us to really want to go down that route and it may end up being that way. But Director Burkhardt is doing everything he can to try to put together a, a set of engineered plans from, from his own mind that will be, you know, at least usable for us. And the, the biggest issue is just getting the state permit. And so I know he's working with the state and that's one area where he's got a a lot of experience as working with the state to try to make sure that that permit is, is signed off on. So I, I think he's got some good ideas on how he can try to make it, make it work. And we'll see if it's feasible. The, there's something else I was going to mention, but I can't remember what it was now. So.
So just in general, so there will not be any joint meeting, correct?
Yeah, not before the end of the year. Sorry. So I spoke with County Clerk Wetstein and she indicated that they were hoping to have something after the first of the year.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. November twenty twenty financials, Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I did not.
Commissioner Glenn?
I, I did not, other than the, let me find it here. Only thing I think for December, it didn't have any income or expense. Here it is, any income or expense items listed for December.
Did I include the wrong month there? Or it should have been November, not December.
Well, that may be, that explains it because I think, well, I found it.
Yeah, I apologize on that. It should, it should have shown this November's revenue and expenses rather than December.
And I, that, so that explains it. But I looked at the year to date and, and everything looked, looked fine to me.
Okay. I will go ahead and move on to informational items, traffic study for the intersection of U fifty-nine, K thirty-one Park Road. Chris?
So as you may recall here, a couple of years ago, there was a, a question about the possibility of a left turn signal there at that intersection, especially on Tuesdays today. It gets insanely busy with regard to the, the sale going on at the sale barn as well as traffic for school, et cetera. So there was some, some desire to see if that might be possible. KDOT went ahead and commissioned a traffic study on it, said that, well, it's probably going to be a year and a half to two years before our engineers can get a study done. So this is the result of that study. Essentially, they're saying that there is no need and they're not going to be willing to, to allow a turn, a left turn signal at that location. They have some, some recommendations, as you can see, but a left turn signal itself is not one of them.
Yeah, I noticed they had phrased it, it may be considered, considered when funding becomes available.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions about this study?
I did not.
Commissioner Glenn?
I did not. It was very extensive. I'll give them that.
If it was. Okay, item B. Refuse you to make operational changes proposal.
So a, as I'm sure you read, Director Burkhardt has came up with a in the process of trying to make our trash utility more solvent, as you may recall, we've talked for the last two years about our utilities and the issues that we have, that wastewater and trash are really the two utilities that we have that are in them, that, because myself, at least the, the greatest majority of concern. Given that currently our, our revenues either don't meet, don't cover costs operationally or it's very close. And trash itself is the utility, which is in the, is in the worst shape that we're losing money every year on the trash service. And it's continues to bleed more and more and that's going to be even worse come next year with regard to the county's change in cost to us for, for dumping, as you're aware. In, in the process of, of trying to figure out how we can make it more solvent, Director Burkhardt has came up with a number of ideas, one of which is to go and, and dump more frequently at Coffee County, which I do think will help, but it is not the solution. As Commissioner Glenn referenced, that's, unless we get a transfer station built, that's not realistically going to be a long-term solution. And it's more of a short-term Band-Aid. The, this particular proposal, as you can tell, addresses the trash solvency issue from a different perspective, more from the, from the outlook of that, you know, we meter all of our other utilities with regard to electric, gas, water. And this is one utility that, that we do not. We have that capability, but we don't currently do that. And given that our costs are, are twofold, one, we have a fixed cost, which is cost of personnel, which is cost of trucks, so on and so forth, the cost of being able to actually pick it up. And then we have a variable cost, which is our cost to dispose of the trash. We, our current rate structure with all of the utilities is based on both. We have a fixed charge, the customer charge of whatever it may be. For instance, gas, it's two dollars a month. We've talked about that at length in the past, that in my opinion, that rate structure needs to be modified, increase the, the base charge, the fixed charge, decrease the usage charge. In this case, there, and, and that's because for gas, your fixed charge is so low. If you use a lot of gas, you pay a lot. If you don't use very much gas, you don't pay very much at all. But we charge for the usage charge because our cost, we have to purchase it wholesale, we resell. If you use more gas, it costs us more money. Trash is the same way in that we charge a base charge of fifteen dollars a month. And, but then we incur a cost as well for how much trash you dispose of. We have to go dump that. The more trash you have, the more cost it is to us as the city. We don't currently charge anybody based on how much they use. So whether it's one bag of trash or whether it's fifty bags of trash, it's the same cost for a resident. And, and commercial properties in, in most cases are estimated. And so it's a, it's a challenging scenario for us currently in that compared to other utilities, we are consistently losing money because we're not charging based on usage. And so that's the gist of where his proposal is coming from. And certainly I'll, I'll let him speak a little bit more to the, to the specifics of it, but, you know, high level overview, that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at.
I would welcome questions. Mr. Wire explained it pretty well. The problem is you can throw away one dollar general sack, you don't purchase trash bags, one dollar general sack at the mailbox and be fine. $1 general sack at the mailbox and be fine, or you can throw away an entire block worth of trash and be fine. What needs to happen is we go to a method where we bill for the amount of trash we throw out. We don't have to raise rates by any means, as long as you fit in a small container. And additionally, I have cart tipper proposals because we have to go do a standardized trash cart. Quite frankly, I've ridden the trash truck a lot since I've been here and the way we do it is very antiquated, just my personal opinion.
My question, my question is, are you making a billing nightmare by, you know, they pull up there to dump the trash? Well, they got a bag or two, two bags more than they're, you think they should have.
None at all.
Getting that information down and then getting it relayed to city staff and then getting that billed. I mean, it looks to me like an operational nightmare. I, I've heard of different outfits selling stickers and you, if you have something extra, you gotta have another sticker to put on it. You buy the stickers. I, I don't know. I just wonder if it's not going to be a, a nightmare for billing and trying to keep track of it.
Mr. Wind, not at all. If it doesn't go in the cart, we don't pick it up.
That's not going to do much with the aesthetic sound if we got trash light in the streets.
Then you buy another cart.
But, but what if they just don't care that the trash is sitting out there? They
Let them rot in their own filth.
That becomes a code enforcement issue at that point.
I think that the difference here compared to other utilities, like say, gas, electricity, that's not something you can move somewhere else. So if you have someone who doesn't want to pay for excess garbage, you're going to find that your city dumpsters are going to be full of people's trash, or people will put their trash in front of someone else's house. I mean, I, I just don't know that that would work too well. I mean, I know that in some cities, they will allow people, if they want to purchase a cart or use one of the city carts, they can pay a $2 monthly fee or something to use it, but they can still have trash outside of that cart and it'll cost them money. I mean, it's kind of a health and sanitation issue too. I would almost rather see that of the sanitation department be subsidized to a degree, which I know that it is. But more so than compromising on, I, I don't know, charging people more based on some usage that could definitely fluctuate.
Ms. Mayor, respectfully, do you choose to use a certain amount of water in the summer versus the winter?
I know that our trash definitely varies as far as like, is there a holiday? So around Thanksgiving or Christmas, we're going to have a lot more trash.
So would you be willing to pay more for a larger cart, knowing that you can fit everything you ever need to have in that cart?
I think that I would honestly prefer just to know what I'm going to be char, I mean, have a flat rate fee as opposed to it being a variable fee.
And then would you hold back some of your trash on your heavy weeks and then put it in there on light weeks to?
It would really depend what's in the trash bag, I suppose. But I'm not really even speaking from me because if we did have this, I would, I suppose, try to monitor my trash. What I'm saying is that there are going to be people who are going to take their trash bags to the city dumpsters to throw their trash away, or they'll just dump it in the country because they don't want to pay more.
In which case it's Anderson County that bears the burden, not us.
That's still our, our, our problem to some extent.
Problem like that. I and I, for one thing, I definitely appreciate the thoughts put into operational changes and trying to get the, the financials in a better situation. I wonder i, if you guys would allow me some time. I, I mean, Director Burkhardt, I I'm, I'm good friends with the gentleman that owned a large trash company for decades. I wonder if I can try to set up a meeting and, and have him would just sit down and talk to him. I think he could give a lot of insight to a lot of these things. And got years of experience and it might be, might save a lot of grief or, or give some insight on things.
And so we are in the process of trying to reach out to some other utilities as well that do the same job. Have a contact the city of Emporia to try and reach out to them and, and visit with their public works director and, and their sanitation director to visit with them about how they they handle their operation. Granted, they're a lot bigger than us, but you know, their, their situation is, you know, that they have the same challenges that we do. And my understanding, you know, their situation is that their trash utility actually subsidizes other departments. Their trash utility subsidizes the general fund. Like our electric utility do and water and, and gas, because they're able to turn a profit through their operational methods. Same, same thing with the city of Lawrence and a lot of other places that, you know, the trash utility is solvent and it actually is a, a mechanism that is a profit generator rather than a, an entity that needs subsidized. And each of these utilities, at least in my opinion, needs to be self-sufficient. Each utility should be run like its own individual business. And if, if your business is losing money, you know, we need to make some changes. Operationally, this business is one that is losing money. This should be a standalone business. The trash utility should be able to generate a profit on its own, to be able to then reinvest into itself, to be able to reinvest into buying new trucks, whatever we need to do to keep, to keep the utility going. And, and at the moment, we're just not there. So, but, but we are reaching out to others as well as, you know, Director Burkhardt, I think does have some, some terrific ideas that we're, we're obviously exploring, but certainly if you have a contact, Commissioner Glenn, I, I think we'd love to have that, but it is something what we are actively trying to figure out, hey, what, what, why, why reinvent the wheel, you know? Other people are successful with this, so let's try to pick their best method, best methods and see if we can implement some of those here locally.
Absolutely. And I do appreciate that the work that has been put into it so far. I would just, I know that it was brought here as a proposal more for us to acquaint ourselves with the ideas and to kind of, you know, see if we can, you know, how receptive we are and, you know, what we would like to see or what we might work on. So, I mean, since it's not even a regular business item yet, well, like I said, I appreciate the information being provided so that the, so that all the commissioners can basically become acquainted with what might be on the horizon so that we can refine everything to work best for the city. So thank you for all the work that's been done there. City managers report. Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I don't think I have any additional questions in the report. Nope.
When, do you have any questions?
I did not.
Did you have anything that you wanted to add to your report?
Uh, just, just a few things real quick. Would like to mention that the Maple Street project, the drainage project from Fourth Avenue to First Avenue, hoping to have designs for that here within the next couple of weeks, moving forward on that. The water plant project, we're meeting next Monday with the engineers on that again to get to help move forward on, to be moving forward on that. I would like to, as has already been, been done, thank Auburn Pharmacy and, and its owner, Mike Burns, for the airport upgrade. That's a significant improvement, the new airport car or airport vehicle that we have compared to our previous vehicle that we couldn't even get started here earlier this week. So certainly appreciate Auburn for, for that gracious donation. On the issue with the trash truck that Director Burkhardt was discussing earlier and Commissioner Glenn, you brought up. That is something that Director Burkhardt and I have been discussing. He's been working with his staff to try and find some, some good options on that route. And, and it's something that in a lot of cases, they'll find a good truck that, you know, there was one here in Anderson County that would have worked terrific, that would have been terrific. It was a good price, low mileage, good, good operationally mechanically, to my understanding, but it sold awfully quick. So just wanting to make sure everybody is, is on board with if we find a, a good truck that, you know, checks out mechanically and everything for us to go ahead and move forward on that purchase because likely we're not going to be able to come back to you and request permission because we, we wait for the next meeting and we're going to wind up missing out on that vehicle. So, so everybody in agreement that if, if we find something that you're okay with, with going that route?
I definitely am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
The I did want to mention real quick, on the Santa Cruz on the 19th, if you would like to, to be present, be involved, I've asked city staff to try to be there. Certainly, we'd like to, to recognize you as the commission if you would like to, to be there in any fashion. I would like to see if we could get approval from you to close Oak Street on, on that date from around 5:00 to 8:00 PM for that section of, of road to be able to, to block it off for that purpose. I know that's something that, you know, you're normally supportive of for those types of, of events, but thought I'd seek your approval.
Yes, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
I do.
Okay, thank you all. And I would also like to extend my gratitude and thanks to both Chris Hicks and Susan Wetstein for putting this together on such short notice. I know for Chris, it was devastating that the chamber parade got canceled. And all the work that she had put into that was, was nixed. And so to be able to throw this together and, and make something positive happen, I, I certainly appreciate her efforts. So appreciate both of you for, for finding a way to, to make something positive here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Citizens to be heard. Is there anyone who has any questions or comments that they would like to come before the commission? Okay, seeing none, then I will go ahead and make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a few seconds?
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.